September seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Can you call the roll to establish the quorum, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Still here.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present, as all of our meetings, this was being broadcast live and will be shown on our cable channel also throughout the week. We already did one and two, let's move on to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is a time if someone has an item of concern for an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. Yes, sir, name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Robert Steinberg, forty-one fifty-eight Portage Lane, for forty years. A couple issues. As I was driving here, I heard that Mayor Manuel is imposing a higher tax on vaping products. And I've sent you the latest scientific information on what vaping is doing to our teens, and I'm just going to assume that you all read it even though you don't respond back. And it's a terrible problem. They're getting addicted to nicotine at an early age, and that's what the tobacco industry wants, and we just roll over. It should be banned in the village. You know, call Al and a few of the other mayors and see if maybe you could start a ban on vaping. Code enforcement. We have a process where you, if you're doing certain things, you need permits, which is good, so you'll get proper electrical and proper plumbing and construction, safety and all that kind of stuff. But I had a neighbor have a problem. She had a new roof put on that immediately leaked. And so, since she had a permit for her new roof, she called, you know, the village. So she came home to find a note at her door that someone came out. So she called the person and said, "Well, did you go, did you see where the flashing was bad, where the leakings came from, you know, it's coming from?" And she was told, "Well, we don't go on roofs." Perfect to talk about, we'll talk about liability tonight. So I'm not sure what the permit does for having a roof put on your house, if no one can get up there and inspect it to make sure it's done properly so it doesn't leak and cause mold in houses and, and that kind of stuff. Firemen go up ladders all the time. Listening to tonight about the building along Central Road, I could understand not wanting to put a path in there, you know, asphalt and everything, but, you know, they could have, they could put crushed limestone. It's not expensive. It's temporary, they can upgrade it from there. Because I'm thinking about the PACE facility that I'm sure you're all very proud of, and I'm sure there's bike racks there. Am I, am I correct?
Yep, there are.
Yeah, so you really can't, you can't get there from here. So maybe the village can think about a way to put down a crushed limestone path, just like the Prairie Path, you know, all over northern Illinois. So, talked about circus, someone mentioned circus tonight. So it reminds me of our last Fourth of July committee meeting. We got some financials from Sue. Of course, Mr. Norris would like our budget requests, and yet we only had verbal financials and, but I can tell you, Gary, we took, and Mike, we took a hit of eleven thousand dollars, profit that we lost to the Beer Garden. I'm sure he's happy. We also took eleven thousand dollar hit because the Sears Center did not take care of their responsibility, and that was to get sponsors. That's Ben's job and his staff, and he lost staff or whatever, and so that was another eleven thousand dollar loss. I mean, I go to other fests. Last, last year I went to fifteen different fests. This year I want to go on to six. Advertising banners all over the place. That's disappointing. Talking to our Chair, Jackie Green, who, she's been on the committee for thirty-five years. She's been Chair for the last seven. In all those years, once or twice, there was a five-day fest, because Fourth of July fell on a Wednesday or Thursday, and there's never been less than a three-day fest. Well, at the last meeting, with the mayor's push, and Ben Gibbs, who hasn't been to a fest in three years, and has told the fest he knows nothing about bans, proclaimed he's an expert on festivals all of a sudden, and he and his employee Craig voted to turn the fest into a one-day fest on the Fourth of July. Wasn't on the agenda to do this. Mr. Mayor, you're, you're ex officio on the committee, right?
No, I'm a full member.
Okay. So, you know, it's like slap in the face to everybody who's been working hard, Mr. Mayor. And I mean, we have one member on the committee who would like it to be a day because he says he's too exhausted. Okay, so go home, or quit the committee. It's not about us, it's about putting on a Fourth of July festival for the residents. I mean, it's been a, it's been, we've been doing this over thirty-five years, a three-day festival. Now, it's taken a hit being out of the Sears Center. I understand all the reasons why you want to promote the Sears Center and everything, and how hard it is to hold it in the neighborhood back here. I get that. But the Sears Center is, it's far more expensive to be out there. It's spread out all over the place. The crafters, I thought they would be absolutely thrilled, Donna and Sue, about, you know, the crafters being able to be inside. She'd be happy if they moved it back to the police station. So that's really not part of our festival. But we, we put in a lot of hard work to try, and try to make this work, and we get, we don't get the support we should from staff. We get surprises. They forget to tell us stuff, and it makes it, it makes it really hard. It seems that, you know, the Beer Garden is more important than the whole festival. And I've talked to you, Mike, about it, and yes, you know, we're pro-business, absolutely, but not at the cost of the, of the fest. It's not, you know, the people, it's the cost of the fest. Gary, you're, you're, this, this committee falls under you, Trustee Palafas, and I don't remember the last time you came to a meeting, and so how hard do we work?
I sat next to you the last time I was there.
Hmm?
I sat next to you the last time I was there.
Yeah, and, and I'm very disappointed that a vote out of the clear blue with, with sure votes to follow the mayor, because Bill, you know, the guys at the Sears Center basically work for us. They work for the village. And, and I don't think it was fair that, that this was brought up. It shouldn't, it shouldn't have happened, and I've already started to find the unattended consequences of what, of this action. So the Fourth is on a Thursday. There's going to be festivals, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that's probably what Frontier Days is going to do. A lot of towns will do Fourth of July through the end of the weekend, and stage, stages and lighting and sound systems are going to go to the multi-day fests. So the company that I was, that put it on for us this year, they can't, they can't do what they did for us next year unless they have some smaller equipment and that maybe they, they can do and find a crew that can do it, but, you know, they've got everything spoken for, for the Fourth of July. It was also decided at our last meeting that there won't be a main stage, we're going to use the circus tent, and, which I don't have any problem with that tent, you know, it makes me think I'm in Denver. But it's, it's going to be tiny. It's embarrassingly tiny. Really embarrassing. Yes, we can have all the full fireworks out there because we're far enough away from anybody as, as Dan O'Malley pointed out to us, that we'd have to use smaller shells if we brought it back here. Could also shoot them off from the AT&T site, you know, be able to see it. That's not the first time that's come up. But I, you know, I don't know, I don't know what you people want from the citizens. We put in our time, we do a lot of research, a bunch of us, some of, some don't do anything whatsoever and leave us hanging, like Mr. Gibbs did, and, and they're still on the committee, getting to make decisions, getting to put his tin box on a hill up there when I'm told that you can't get the, the Owners Association up there to approve anything. And then all of a sudden, there's that tin box that he left a light on, and people are coming up and saying, "Well, why are the lights on up there if they're not open?" One thing, one blind side after another. Now, I told the committee, anybody complains to us about this, we're going to point the finger right back at you guys, because you're letting it happen. Mr. Mayor, you're letting it happen. This is a bad idea. It's a terrible idea, no reason for anybody to stick around in their hometown where they pay a lot of taxes to have a three-day festival. I, I, you can't, you just can't understand how disappointed we are, and this is your job not to let these kind of things happen. So I don't know, there's still time to save it for next year. You know, a one-day festival, what a waste. Waste of our energies. It's almost as much work as putting on a three-day festival, other than the standing-on-our-feet time during the festival. And we provide carts for the people that can't walk. So our, our committee should not have any complaints, and we only get complaints from one person on the committee, and he's got his own cart, so, you know, he shouldn't complain. But, Mr. Mayor, this is not fair. This was not fair, it wasn't on the agenda. I mean, I looked at tonight, and it's like, what rules of order are you following? Not one committee head looked to the audience to see if there were any questions. You know, there's a chance I might have something to say, otherwise I wouldn't show up. It's, you're, you're like, you're just going it through the routine. I mean, residents can come to these meetings and they can speak at, at time committee meetings, which is where all the work gets done, and by not mentioning it, the people watching on TV don't know that they can come to the meetings and make, make comments. There's more and more time during committee meetings, and you just go about your business in a routine, blindly just following what you've done before. You're all disappointing me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I've got a question.
Yes, Trustee Stanton.
Uh, the next time your committee comes up, is there, can someone make a motion to change what already has been done?
Sure.
Okay.
So, so long as someone who voted against it. That's Robert's rules.
Okay.
Actually, somebody voted on the prevailing side.
Yeah.
On the microphone.
Did he use the microphone? He used the mic.
I mean, under, under Robert's rules, someone who voted on the prevailing side gets to bring up the motion again. Otherwise, the people who lose would just keep bringing it up, and you'd never get any place.
I understand, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to item number four, approval of the minutes of the September Fourth, twenty-eighteen meeting. Chair, accept the motion.
Second.
Motion, there's a second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. Five, consent agenda omnibus vote. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. These two items are, A, approval of the agenda, and B, approval of the schedule of bills for September seventeenth, twenty-eighteen, in the amount of four million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, twenty-four dollars and ten cents. Any questions on these? There's a motion, a second. Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Motion carried, move on to President's Report.
Mr. Mayor, just the, my, when I stood up there, none of that was broadcasted. You're being broadcasted, everything before was being broadcasted on TV six, and nothing was broadcasted when I addressed you.
I have no knowledge about that, I'd assume it's being broadcasted.
I had two texts that tell me it went to the Village logo.
That's news to me, it shouldn't have.
I see.
You want me to get them?
He's looking out the window.
There's two people in there, actually, I answered a question. He said it went to the Village logo while he was talking. It went to the Village logo while they're on break.
Right.
And they, and whoever texted you probably didn't switch back to the channel in time they were at the Bears games. We can check the tape.
We'll check the tape, yeah.
Because it's only going to record what we broadcast. It won't, it won't allow it.
Yeah, I got that from Jackie Green.
We didn't record him when he was talking.
We go to the logo when there's.
It's a break, yeah.
And so unless something happened that we don't know about, Bruce said it was running.
Okay, at least it's recorded, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to President's Report. On September fifth, I attended Northwest Municipal Conference Executive Committee meeting, and the sixth, some of us were able to make the Winston Knowles Education Group ribbon-cutting. Seventh, eighth, and ninth September, had a very wonderful Platts concert that Trustee Palafas was very intimately involved in, had a great turnout, and I'm sure they are and should be very pleased. On Tuesday, the eleventh, we had our local hero ceremony at Brookdale, and later that evening, at 5:00 PM, we had our eleven, nine-eleven ceremony of remembrance at the Village Hall here. On Wednesday, the twelfth, I went to the Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting, which Governor Rauner was at. Candy Pritzker declined to attend, they're trying to get him at another time. Also, Wednesday evening, the twelfth, I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference Board Meeting. On Thursday, September thirteenth, Trustee Palafas, Trustee Mills, and I went to Hawks for Vets, the girls swim meet at Hoffman Estates High School. They donated proceeds to veterans. And on Thursday evening, I attended the Fourth of July meeting, which you heard something about earlier this evening. On Friday, the fourteenth, I attended the, we had the Illinois Legislative Update Luncheon at Lexian Brothers, they did a great job again, we had a full house, it was really packed, and we had four legislators, and thought there was a very, very good discussion back and forth. And that evening, I attended the Uncorked Untapped Wine and Beer Event for the Hoffman Estates Park District Foundation. On Sunday, the sixteenth, most of us were able to go to the Block Party on Langdon Place in Barrington Square, and the Ganesh Yutsiv Festival at Barrington Square also, it's the second year they've done that there. And earlier this evening, we had the Community Pride Awards, our yearly awards to people who do a great job maintaining their property and their gardens. And tomorrow, we've got our Sister Cities Commission is hosting a tour for residents from France as part of the organization's football exchange. The trustees, village clerk, and I are looking forward to touring the hall with them and learning more about their activities. We extend a hearty welcome from all of us in Hoffman Estates. We also have the Bistonic ribbon-cutting tomorrow. And on Saturday, September twenty-second, the Chutes and Ladders softball game, at which the Fire Department is seeking revenge for last year's defeat at the hands of the Police Department. That's always a fun game, and they put their heart and soul into that. And at this point, we'll move on to trustee comments. Trustee Gata.
Oh, okay, Friday, September seventh, the keg tapping at the Platts concert, and I agree with you that Gary Palafas and his staff, they did an excellent job as far as for the three days on that, and the entertainment that you had. You guys put in a lot of work, but, and you know what, it paid off, because it, I think anyways, that it was excellent. And then on Saturday, I attended the Platts concert again. On Monday, September tenth, I'd just like to wish all of my Jewish friends, as far as Russia Shonah, to wish them a Happy New Year, because we did not have a meeting last Monday. Then on Tuesday, September eleventh, attended the Brookdale Honors, Local Heroes, that was at Brookdale, as the mayor had said. And then also on Tuesday, the nine-eleven ceremony of remembrance, which was here at the Village Hall. Then on Friday, the fourteenth, attended the Illinois Legislative Update Luncheon, where the mayor was the emcee. And then on Saturday, the sixteenth, the Block Party on Twenty-two-Eleven Langdon. And then also, we went to Ganesh, I can't pronounce it, Yusef Festival at Barrington Square. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Newell.
Okay, beginning on the seventh and the eighth, attended the Platts concert, and nice job everyone to whoever took part in it and attended it. It was a little chilly, but a lot of people, and everyone had a good time. On nine-eleven, of course, the remembrance here at the village, which everyone remembers where they were seventeen years ago, which it's hard to believe that it's been that long. On the fourteenth, the Illinois Legislative Lunch, which the mayor or trustee Gata had mentioned, that the mayor was the emcee at the Amita Children's Hospital. And on the fifteenth, I attended the Dog Carnival, which was put on by the Park District at Fabrini Park. Never saw so many dogs in my whole life, every shape, size, color, well, you name it, they had it. It was a lot of fun. And then on the sixteenth, of course, the Block Party on Langdon, and the Ganesh Festival at Barrington Square, and then tonight was the Community Pride Awards, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Palafas.
I have a number of the same things. I also attended Hawks for Vets last Thursday at the Swim and Diving Meet with Trustee Mills and the mayor. It was fun that they invited us out, and they recognized vets. They got to buy a Hawks for Vets t-shirt that I wore to the friend game, you know, so, "Wear the vikes for, you know, for vets," you know, right? Had a little fun with that, you know me. And then Friday, I also went to the football game with Trustee Arnett, which is funny, somebody asked us if we were the cheerleading coach's parents, which was the low for the evening.
They kind of won that game, didn't they?
Yeah, they, they won seventy-six to seven. And I asked the principal when I was over there for the HEOC meeting, you know, what happened, and he said they had the third string in, and they were still mopping it up. So they couldn't do anything wrong. I mean, the opening kickoff, they didn't even touch the guy running back, so it was a complete blowout. Also, attended the nine-eleven remembrance, so outstanding job by Celebrations Commission. I attended with my sons AJ and Caleb. It was interesting, because that, you know, nine-eleven was obviously two thousand and one, Caleb was born in two thousand and two. So, you know, he's like, "Why haven't you ever brought me this before?" I'm like, "I don't know, I was in trouble." Also, I know, right, right, they never seemed interested until this year, so congratulations to all the Community Pride winners that received recognition earlier this evening. Bob Stone actually emailed me and said, "Thanks, give thanks to the board and the committee for picking his home, he's in between trips." Today, we had the HEOC meeting, where we had almost thirty different agencies in attendance. The room was standing room only, so the amount of participation that's coming into that group for the underprivileged families, for, you know, the greater part of Hoffman Estates High School, has been outstanding. A lot of great action there. Platts Concert was a great success, as we added Sunday to the weekend, not to bring up the village's new three-day fest, but it was fantastic. And we got our own advertising for ninety-two-hundred dollars, we don't lean on the Sears Center for that. Just a little plug for really, Gail Vandenberg and Jim, as they are predominantly responsible for pulling up a lot of that money. We set some records around food and beverage and beer sales, but many thanks to trustee Vandenberg, and Jerry, and Jim, and Alex, and Samuel, Yusef, Alicia, and then our staff, Mark, Rachel, Ryan, Legal, for all the contracts and public works that are out there. You know, you can plan and plan and plan an event like that, but if you don't get the weather, it just doesn't happen. So thank you for all of your support from this group. And to be honest with you, I appreciate the thanks, but if you looked at the amount of hours that we all put in, I'm probably towards the bottom. I mean, I run the meetings and stuff and facilitate, but, you know, a lot of those folks are, you know, really passionate about the event, and as, as am I, but they just, you know, just put a lot more time into making it fantastic. The games were fun, as always, and, you know, it was just a good time had by all. And then earlier, I apologize, I was, I was looking up on Google, the Bergman Farmhouse, I didn't mean to bail on the vote, because two years ago, I led the charge to have it reconsidered. So it was a complete flip on my part, I'm just burned out after two years of waiting. So I'm nine days short of two years. And sixty-seven of the eighty-one homes are, have been sold, I mean, come on, you know, give me a hammer and a paintbrush. So really, that's all for me.
Okay, great. Trustee Mills.
Okay, a lot of the same things. First of all, congratulations and thank you to trustee Palafas and former trustee Gail Vandenberg for a great job in orchestrating the Platts Concert this year. I was there Friday night for the tapping of the keg, and Saturday, I helped out for a couple hours, and just appreciated seeing everybody that was there and all the work. You, you have to say one thing, your committee really works well together, and that's important. If you don't have that, that working effort there and camaraderie, you're never going to get anywhere with it. On the eleventh, I attended the nine-eleven ceremony here at Village Hall, and once again relived many of the memories with the speech that went on that night, and it does bring back a lot to think about. On the thirteenth, as I stated, we went for Hawks for Vets over at the Hoffman Estates High School pool, it was great to return there, I haven't been there in several years, my daughter used to be on the swim team, and brought back memories there, too. On the sixteenth, we had the Langdon Block Party and the Ganesh Festival down at the mall, and on the fourteenth, was also at the Chambers Legislative Luncheon. Speaking of the sixteenth, just to make a little side comment, I want to say to our Fire Department, to Truck Twenty-two, they, we were driving from the Block Party over to the Indian Festival at, at the mall yesterday, and Truck Twenty-two was driving through the mall, and apparently saw this young little, little young man whose bike was giving him trouble, and they had pulled over and had out their toolbox, and they were helping him get his bike fixed.
They got it fixed?
So, and they did it very quickly, and it was such a nice thing to see, the cooperation and helpfulness as part of our community. Again, the, the exhibit outside, the memories to Mayor O'Malley, boy, several of us are here because of Mayor O'Malley over the years, and I still remember him saying, "Oh, be Chair of Plan Commission, I've got some fun things coming up." And the next day, they announced Sears, so.
That was fun.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. But congratulations also to our Community Pride Award winners.
That's it. Great. Trustee Stanton.
If I can get this mic on. Thank you. On the sixth, the mayor and I went to Thomas Jefferson School for a question-and-answer program with the third graders. Later that day, we also attended the ribbon-cutting for the Winston Knowles Education Group. I did miss the Platts Concert for the first time since I've been a trustee, because I had my fiftieth anniversary high school reunion. So, sorry, but I did enjoy my reunion as well. On the eleventh, I was able to attend the Local Hero Ceremony at Brookdale, and then later that afternoon, attended our own village's nine-eleven ceremony of remembrance. On the fourteenth, I attended the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce Illinois Legislative Update Luncheon, and today, we did have the Community Pride Awards before our board meeting, and that's it.
Okay, trustee Arnett.
Thank you. I also attended the nine-eleven memorial here at the Village Hall. Special thanks to the Celebrations Committee for putting on a great ceremony, along with Captain Schneider, Lieutenant Butler, and Lieutenant Felgenauer, who always bring back the memories and do just a fantastic job with it. On the fourteenth, I did attend the Hawks for Vets with trustee Palafas, and yes, that was a lot of fun, asking if we were parents of people who are just a little bit younger than us, but it was fun, and they did a really good job, and they had a really good crowd. On the sixteenth, I did attend the Block Party on Langdon Place, as well as the Ganesh Festival. And also, tonight, I attended the Community Pride Awards, congratulations to all the winners, and just wishing everybody Lashana Tova and good yanta for Yom Kippur coming up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Move on to six C, Village Managers' Report.
Yes, Mayor, just want to remind the board and the public that the Metropolitan Waste Reclamation District mandated smoke testing will be starting in the village tomorrow. Parts of Parcel B, Parcel C, and the Highlands will be tested, so that if people do see smoke coming out of their homes or out of drains, that that's what it is. It's, for the most part, we hope it's all smoke testing, right, Mr. Nebel? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Six D, Village Clerks' Report.
No report.
Okay, six C, Treasurers' Report. Any questions on the Treasurers' Report? If not, it'll be received and filed. Move on to F, Committee Reports, Public Works and Utilities, trustee Newell.
Okay, on September twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen, we will have the Public Work and Utility Committee meeting here. We will have a roll call, we have the approval of minutes for August twentieth, twenty-eighteen, and under new business, we'll have two items. Number one would be request authorization toward contract for a village-wide water distribution system leak survey to Water Services out of Elgin, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Item number two would be request authorization toward contract for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen winter tractor rentals bid to be determined. And then the reports for information only, there would be two of them, which would be the Department of Public Works monthly report, two would be Department of Development Services' monthly engineering report of the Transportation and Engineering Division. Then, if there's anything for the President's Report, nothing under other items in review, and we would adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Newell. Public Health and Safety, trustee Gata.
Yes, immediately following the Public Works and Utility, the Public Health and Safety Committee will call into order on September twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen, we will have a roll call. And number two, approval of the minutes of August twentieth, twenty-eighteen, under new business, nothing as of yet. And then the reports, information only. nothing as of yet. And then the reports, information only. One, the Police Department monthly report. Two, Health and Human Services monthly report. Number three, Urgency Management Coordinator monthly report. Four, Fire Department monthly report. We'll have anything under the President's Report, other items in review, and then we would adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Gata. Finance, trustee Palafas.
We will call it to order immediately following Public Health and Safety. We will have a roll call to establish quorum. And then we have minutes to approve from the meetings of August 20th, and tonight's Special Finance Committee meeting, September 4th. We have five new business items, a few which have subsections. The first one is recommend approval of inordinance adding section 13-6-2, the collection costs, to the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code. Item number two has a subsection of A, B, and C. It's a request approval of consolidated Sears Center arena agreements with A, Spectra for arena management, B, front row marketing for sale of contractual rights, and C, New Era Tickets for ticketing services. Item number three is a request authorization to award a contract to Webmark Doors of South Elgin, Illinois, to replace five doors at the Sears Center Arena in an amount not to exceed $35,711.47. Item number four is a request authorization to renew the Application Service Provider Agreement, ASP, with Superior LLC, Superior, and the Village of Hoffman Estates, Illinois, customer, for a term of three years at a subscription cost as follows. Year one, April 2018 through March 2019, $159,085.85. Year two, April 2019 through March 2020, is $167,040.14. Year three is April 2020 through March 2021, for an amount of $175,392.15. Item number five is a request authorization to a formal bidding and award a contract for the purchasing of nine semi-rugatised laptop computers and accessories to CDS Office Technologies for use in the Police Department, eight and Public Works, one vehicles in the amount not to exceed $35,135. We will have our three informational reports. The first from Finance Department, the second from the Information Systems Department, and the third from the Sears Center Monthly Report. If need be, a President's Report, anything and other that would need to come before the committee. We have no items in review, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Palafas. Seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Report. We've already done these. Move on to A, Additional Business. So, desire of the board. Do them individually?
Can you pull, well, we already did E.
You already did E.
Pull D and F. And if, I'll make a motion to approve by omnibus votes. A, B, C, G, H, I, J.
I'll second.
Okay, is a motion a second for an omnibus vote on A, B, C, F, G, H?
I, J.
I, J. And there's a second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the omnibus vote, say aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion a second. Okay, the items entailed here are A, request board approval of an ordinance amending sections 3-1-3, 3-2-6, 3-3-17, and 8-3-3 of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code elected officials' compensation. B, request board approval of a resolution creating an ad hoc complete count committee for the 2020 census of the Village of Hoffman Estates. C, request board approval of a resolution establishing fees for planning, zoning, development incentives, and other related fees of the Village of Hoffman Estates. G, request board approval of intergovernmental agreement with Cook County for the Invest in Cook Grant Program. H, request board approval of A. One, Second Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Cook County for shoe factory road improvements in an amount not to exceed $395,712. And two, second supplement to the Village Phase II Design Services Contract with CivilTech Inc. in the amount of $395,712, for a total not-to-exceed amount for Phase II Design Services of $980,990.90. I, request board approval of two IDOT supplemental resolutions to appropriate motor fuel tax funds. For the one, 2014 Street Revitalization Project in the amount of $921,739. And two, 2015 Street Revitalization Project, the amount of $352,362.52. J, request board authorization to award contract for 2018 Surface Patching Project to Brothers Asphalt Paving, Inc., Addison, Illinois, low bid, in an amount not to exceed $200,000. We do have a motion a second. Are any questions on any of these items? C, none. Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. And we have, D, we already did. No, we didn't do D. D, request board approval of a request by Poplar Creek Bowl for a site plan amendment to modify a condition of approval to allow use of outdoor seating by any patron of the bowling alley and banquet business at 2354 West Higgins Road. Chair, accept the motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
There are motion, and there is a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mills?
No.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
No.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. And we have F, request board approval of request by MI Homes of Chicago LLC and Case Properties LLC to extend the required completion dates related to the renovation of the Bergman Farmhouse located on the north side of Algonquin Road, west of Vila Road. And that was amended to...
That this would be the final?
Yes, it would be their final extension.
Right, final extension.
So, that's about the motion what that provides. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
No.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Chair, accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.